I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will need to amend the agenda tonight. We do not need an executive session. Do I get a mention to drop the agenda?
I'm going to drop the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero. This is our local legislator update.
We want to thank Representative Owens and Henderson for coming this evening. Senator McGinn, she was invited, but I believe she's out there tonight working, she said. She probably would not be able to attend, which is totally fine. So, I just thought it'd be great for them to come in and give you a little bit of an update on what's going on that affects public education. I told Avery as he was walking in, "We're not going to throw any hardballs. We just won't throw any softballs." But we appreciate you guys taking the time to come down and share some insights on what we need to be aware of in terms of what is going to happen in Topeka, what your thoughts are, in matter of how it affects public education this year and beyond. So, it's just an open session. If you want to give us a couple of minutes of an update of what you know, and then if any of the board members have any questions they'd like to ask, or I may grill you a little bit, have a little fun with you, we'll go from there.
Awesome. You want to go first, Avery, or am I going to start up?
Yeah, I can just touch on kind of the four bills that I assume you guys would want to know most about. So SB 55 was the transgender sports bill that passed the House and the Senate, but got vetoed by the governor. There were three bills that got vetoed by the governor. HB 2089 is firearm safety education in schools. That was also vetoed. And HB 2039 was the civics test and financial literacy. That was also vetoed. And then the education mega bill started out as 2119. I don't remember what it ended as. It switched. But that passed the House and it failed the Senate 2020. I'm not sure if that will come back up in veto session or not. But those, I guess that's, those were the four bills that I assume you guys would want to talk about.
Yeah, so maybe I'll just carry on with a little bit of different things. So, the governor just recently signed the budget. She did line out and veto a number of issues or a number of concerns that she saw in the budget, but that just came down this evening. Where Senator McGinn is today, I will be tomorrow. Where Senate ways and means met all day getting the new consensus revenue estimates, looking at the budget and what the governor was going to veto, so forth and so on. And then I go up actually tomorrow with appropriations to review the same things and to look at that. The school funding was not part of that. There was some concern that she would veto that because, as Avery mentioned, it was pulled out, kind of put into a mega bill with some policy. As you guys know, that failed. So chances are it's going to come back with, you know, what it will look like is to be determined, but I'm very confident it'll include fully funding education. I mean, I think that it was clear that a lot of that policy wasn't palatable to a number of people. And as a result, we go back and we fix it. One of the other things that I believe still hasn't passed, and that's the 20 mil for the state for our schools. I know that that's kind of been used as maybe a football between chairman on a few items, but I'm, again, fairly confident, well, I'm very confident that's going to get through. I mean, it's an important part of funding our public education system. As far as it comes to veto overrides, we go back a week from today. And it'll be a week from today that we decide which bills we're going to attempt to override. And Governor Kelly vetoed 17 bills today, most of any governor in, can't remember how many years I just read, that have been vetoed. So we're going to have a lot of work to do in a short amount of time. But I want to know what your guys' questions are, what are your concerns, your thoughts? Hardballs, softballs, footballs? I like them all. Well, it's been fun.
Yeah.
Uncomfortable wait time.
About the mega bill, whatever the number is, and specifically the finance parts when it comes to public education, what were some of the parts that you said some people weren't palatable to some people? And what do you think is going to be tweaked for the version that will come in the veto session?
Great question. So what they did is, and it's not uncommon that they do this, to add some policy with budget. It's happened plenty of times in the past. One of the things that they added to fully funding the budget was House Bill 2068, which is the tax credit scholarship program. You guys may know that that program's already in existence. It provides tax scholarships for free and reduced lunch students from any public school. Basically, it was amended to go to any public school. Right now, it's limited to the 100 lowest performing elementary schools that kids can take up to, it's capped out at 10 million, but they can take some of their public education dollars. And if they are not meeting specified goals, that they can take that money and send it to private schools. So it was an attempt to expand that as part of it. And then there was also an attempt to create an educational savings account that basically took, it says, at-risk students could take their base aid, their state base aid, and actually take that and utilize that to an educational somewhere else. So, again, some specific parameters were put around that. It had to be that the kids that were failing in their current setting, they weren't up to standards. There were a number of other parameters, but those were the two things that there was, there was a significant debate about. And it was made really clear that, I mean, it didn't even pass, it passed the Senate with a majority. It barely passed the House. So chances are that's going to be scaled way back, eliminated, fixed. I mean, it's probably done.
So both the student and the school had to be below some level of performance for that to qualify? Is that what they're...
Right. So it was kids that were on free and reduced lunch that actually were not up to standards. Okay? Especially when they were looking at, let's see. The statistic that we have is currently over 80% of our free and reduced lunch students are reading or performing below math, below grade level in math and reading. And so the idea was, let's take those people that aren't getting what they need, and let's give their parents options. The options may not make sense for a lot of kids, or may not even be a private school around which is willing to accept them. But at least it would allow them to use their tax dollars to have options for what they think is best for their child. And that was the logic.
So it was those parameters about the student, but then also something about the school?
Well, so there's two different programs. That sort of gets a little bit confusing. There's the educational savings account, which is the one that I was kind of talking about. And then there's the tax credit scholarship program. The tax credit scholarship program originally was limited to the 100 lowest performing schools. And with this bill, it would have opened it up to include free and reduced lunch students from any public school. Again, with the monetary cap that was capped at 10 million. So currently, there are, in 2020, there were 632 students participating in that scholarship program. So it would expand that. But it would have still kept that financial cap in there. So it's, again, it's looking at, okay, if we have kids that aren't getting what they need despite, you know, whatever efforts and the vested efforts of our schools, our teachers, our counselors and everything, should parents have some level of choice? That's really the fundamental question here, is should parents be forced to keep their kid in a school where they don't feel that their child is getting what they need? Or should there be some other option presented to you? That's, like I said, kind of the basic fundamental question. But again, it didn't mean much there. There was not much support in legislature for those to pass. The governor vetoed it. Or, excuse me, that one never made it to the government because it passed the Senate.
One question I have in that regard, especially with that second piece, is you define at-risk students that aren't at grade level and reading or math. Well, what benchmark determines that? I mean, because state assessments aren't even given until third grade. So when you're, you know, when you're talking about that, well, let's just say that that happens, and they go to that private school environment. What if they're not meeting benchmark there? Or, from what I understand, there's no accountability measures that follow them. And that's, that's, as I explained to you and Avery, well, that's an issue that I have, is that we're being held to a standard. We have to accept all students that are in our attendance area. And, you know, you're trying to hold us accountable. I'm saying you, the legislature.
I did.
Okay. But, you know, they can take those other, those tax dollars and they can go someplace else. And in some cases, as you, they may be renters and not taxpayers in terms of that 20 mils and stuff. So obviously, I try to confuse things as much as I can by throwing all of those different things out. But I just think that when those things are thrown out on the floor, it'd be nice to have conversations about those types of things. Because I, as I've said before, a strong way to pose, I believe firmly in that separation of church and state. I started out in a Catholic school, great place to teach. You just couldn't afford to eat when you were teaching there. And part of that's maybe some of that reason. But, I mean, it is a different environment, and they have a different mission. So I just would hope that the accountability piece, if there are tax dollars involved, that there are accountability measures built into those to be comparable to what we're having to do in the polls.
So valid point, but the rebuttal to that is, from my perspective, is we held them to the same standard and everything was exactly the same in another public school. So the idea, again, here is a parent's prerogative to do what they feel is best for their child. So you're right, they may not have those exact same standards that you have to, you have to have per se. But if the parent feels that that education is still a better environment where their child's getting educated more, again, if they were held to that exact same standard, again, this is just, this is just kind of the, some of the logic and the conversation that went behind this. And I completely respect where you're coming from. And as an educator, our public schools do a fantastic job, every one of them. I mean, I know in my district, I've visited with every single one of my superintendents and school board members, and it's amazing the mixed reaction that we get on these type of topics. Because from a, from a parent's perspective, I've had a number of school board members say, "Well, this is fantastic." I think, I think if we have to compete on some level with school, with private schools, it's going to raise the level of our own school. But then I have other people say the exact same thing. Look, you know what? They're not held to the same standards, so who's to say they're going to get a better education in a private school than they would here?
Usually when you're competing, though, you're trying to make things as level and playful as possible. That's where I buy with competing, as long as they're, we're playing by similar rules. And frankly, even in that private setting, like for special education, for example, the public school is the one that still does serve all of those students in those private settings. So, you know, there's just a lot of, a lot of complex wheels that are spinning in there that I think we simplify or oversimplify to a point to where it sounds great on the face, but when you start digging a little bit, it just is not as simple from my perspective. It's what we want to make it, to get something passed, to make another step towards a level of direction.
What? Do we know it?
It's all good.
What's the general rebuttal, just a common sense argument, that using private or using public dollars to fund a private education seems out of sync?
Again, I don't need to take up all the conversation here. But from my perspective, those were private dollars before they became public dollars. Those were my dollars that paid taxes for my child's education. So those are my dollars.
So as an individual?
Right. Yeah. So I'm just saying, as an individual...
You think that you can earmark where your tax dollars go?
Well, I think government would be a whole lot more efficient if we did. Like, I'd love to, I'd love to invest my own social security.
Well, I mean, because if you're going to give that option out, I mean...
Well, no, you just asked what my rebuttal was. And so I was just sharing, that's my rebuttal personally, that those were my dollars before they became state dollars. And so this, again, is simply was proposing, again, this is dead for the year basically, but this was proposing one option to where that could happen. And I think that in a lot of instances, when we pay into a state tax system, you know, I would much rather manage my own tax dollars in some things like social security and Medicare and things like that. So that's a full nother conversation.
Do you think if this is, this mega education bill is dead for the session, or it's going to come back from the veto session? I thought you were saying true.
Well, we've got a fund education, so it's going to come back. I just don't think it's going to come back with the policy. I think the policy pieces are dead, but the education...
The state needs a con, so the tech...
Yeah. I would be surprised if there's any movement on those before, because the support's just not there. So public education, in my opinion, will absolutely be full of funding before then.
So just a comment, I mean, we're a Title I district, so about half of our kids qualify for free and reduced. So if you're saying that 80% of those kids that qualify for free and reduced are performing below standard, so that would mean, you know, roughly at least 40% of our kids, you know, their parents could have that choice to pull that funding and put it in a different system. And so you can see how that might make folks around here that have anything to do with the budget especially, cringe a little bit when they think about that amount of dollars that were accustomed to come into our budget all of a sudden disappearing, especially potentially in one year's time. I mean, that would be a hard pill to swallow. There's just no way that it couldn't harm our ability to provide, you know, for the students that we have.
Yeah. So neither Representative Owens or I sit on education, and this wasn't a mega bill that had six or seven bills in it. So I've done my best to try to get up to speed with it as quickly as I could. But, so that portion of it, it allows corporations to give money for scholarships. And that was where it was just free lunch students, and now we're expanding it to free and reduced. And so if the corporation gives money for these scholarships, they can receive a 75% tax credit for those students. And so in the end, it should actually save the state money if we get enough money from corporations and other groups giving to this. And like you said, it caps at 10 million, but over time, it should save the state money if just they need it.
But for the local school districts, when they're making, when they're processing through those changes, I mean, it would all depend on how many students decided, you know, their parents decided to take that choice. But to process that change would be rough.
And under the current bill, again, that is basically no more because it didn't pass, but under the current bill, it held the schools harmless for three years. So they, regardless of what happened with students in the first three years, they got full funding just to see how many kids were going to take it. On average, when you look at a state like Florida that's done something similar, it turned out it was around 2.5% of the students that were eligible actually part of getting it. So just for perspective, there were some guidelines put in there to where one drop like a bomb under a guy's lap. But I do understand your perspective completely.
Now, there was only about $3 million, I think, in the last couple of years that, you haven't been close to the cap.
Right.
Like, it was like three or some million dollars, I think, is almost...
Do you remember?
I know.
Yeah, but I knew that we didn't, I knew that we never hit the cap.
Not even close.
Yeah, not even close. So, and again, that kind of, in a way, it speaks for itself, right? That the opportunity was there, and there are people that haven't taken advantage of it.
Back to the first part of Fred's question slash statement about the benchmarks that would be used to determine if a kid was, would qualify, especially those younger kids that aren't doing state testing. What would, what were some of the ways you guys would indicate if a kid was eligible for that kind of program?
I'll be honest, I'd have to dig back into it to specifically look at those benchmarks. Because I remember on the House side, we even added some more guardrails and some more very specific parameters right at the end to ensure that the right people will receive the opportunity, but I don't have those right in front of me at this point.
And I don't remember seeing anything. I just remember the comments about at-risk. And right now, there are 10 qualifiers in the state where a student can be considered at-risk. And lunch status is not one of them. So, and there's enough, if that definition is used, there's enough vagueness in about seven of those that can be, well, gained essentially in terms of how you, how you define that. For example, it says excessive absenteeism, but there's no definition of what excessive absenteeism is. So we could really make it a whole bar. Whoa. So, I mean, all of those things need to come into consideration to where, once again, at least we're all on an equal playing field, even if we're competing, you know, against another district in that regard.
Sure.
Fun times.
Good question. Love it. I think that at the end of the day, the idea is to provide every opportunity for every student to be successful, right? And everybody has a bit of a different perspective sometimes on what's going to get you there. And so having good productive conversations about what that looks like and how we can increase, you know, all these percentages of college readiness and all those other things, they're always beneficial on a state, local and county level. So, that's great.
I just have something, quickly on the two bills, the civics test bill and the firearm safety education bill. Those both sound like things that would be great for our high school kids to know by the time they graduate from our high school. But I think probably everyone at this table prefers local control. And we want to be definitely involved in those kind of decisions about curriculum that we have to fund. And then also that our kids will participate in. So both seem like great ideas, but I definitely think that that kind of decision should be kept at the local level.
Well, I think that was a position that the State Board of Education took, right? When they were trying to unanimously, unanimously against it. You know, that was, especially the civics bill's been something that has been representative of Steve Hubert's kind of baby for many, many years. When it started out, I didn't support it. In the very end, it was under the Conference Committee bill, and I did. And they added a financial literacy piece as well, because, my gosh, our kids need to know financial literacy by the time they graduate. And I know what I found out in many of my districts is they're already doing most of this stuff. I mean, we're, they're already getting a lot of this. And so I didn't think it really had any application to my districts per se. Now, the gun safety one, honestly, I would love to see that pass, and I would still love to, because it doesn't force anybody to do anything. It simply allows a school to offer that in a capacity, if they so choose, to offer a gun safety program that has been created. And I think honestly, that's, that's a very important piece of education. Because unfortunately, as much as we, as much as we all wish every kid had good parents that was going to teach them about firearm safety, they don't. It just doesn't always happen. So for schools to have that option especially would have been, would be really good. So we'll see if that one comes back up for a veto override or not.
You think part of that was because of the lack of options in terms of the curriculum they could choose? Because they had to choose that Eddie Eagle program, if I remember correctly. Of course, with that being NRA, NRA curriculum, I mean, the organization doesn't, not all people support that. So just when they hear that, I mean, that's the only thing, I think the firearm safety is not a bad thing. I just, once again, the local control about what to select, it didn't seem like there was any. The thing with the civics bill, my only issue with that, you know, we would teach our kids to pass that civics test. Okay? But would we, but do they know anything about civics? I mean, when you look at the state assessment, and no child left behind there. We prepare our kids to take those state assessments, but then we're accused of not teaching our kids that thing. Okay? So we rise to the occasion where we need to. And that's my only thing, is how many of our, how many of us in here could pass that civics test? I mean, how many of our, how many of our legislators could have passed the civics test, right? So...
I think we should make that a requirement.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, but to pass a written test, that's one of the things that some of us are good test takers. You know, I just, and I've shared this with both of you before, that's my, my only thing with that. And I talked with Avery about that a little bit. He gave you some insight that essentially the benchmark would have been set at the local level, what passing was. But once again, if you do that, you're going to have uneven application of that. And that's not the intent, from what I understand. So I guess my biggest thing is when those things are taken place, reach out to us and we'll talk to you.
And I would say the exact same thing, right? You guys, everybody has my contact information, Avery's contact, that's exactly what we want to hear. We want to be able to have the robust debates and, you know, agree, disagree, whatever. The ability to communicate is so important in today's society. And it seems like in many areas, and people don't know how to agree to disagree. And, you know, while we always would love to be on the same page, it's always going to happen. But we can always talk. We can always work through things and understanding another person's point of view.
Well, one more question for Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Anderson, as you know, here just real recently, we brought our gas bills, you know, six times higher than they should be. And our families over in Walton got offered the luxury of being put on a six-year repayment plan, kind of that bill. And those are families that we serve here in the school district. And this, we may not necessarily be asking you what Topeka's doing, but I was kind of like in the spirit of what you just said of, hey, when we need to reach out and we need some support, take this as us telling you, we need some support. We need some type of indication from the state of, are we on the right path with how we're approaching the energy company? What does the state suggest that we do? Because now, there hasn't been a whole lot of guidance. Now, our professional organizations have given some guidance, and we're jumping in with them. But is there anything that you're hearing in Topeka that speaks to this situation? Because surely it's not just the USG 373.
No. So we did pass a bill right after, the week after this happened, for $100 million relief to go across the state. I believe there was $30 million or $25 million left over. Do you know where, I mean, have they been...
Yeah, so that's when the secondary kind of loan fund was created that allowed corporations, schools, stuff like that to then borrow as well to spread that payment out over a long period of time.
Is there anything that's not a problem?
No, unfortunately. But even the loan is only a 0.25% interest. And it was just enough for the state treasurer, basically, to cover the paperwork and all that other stuff. So the Attorney General is actively investigating it. I mean, what's different about Newton than all the districts in my, in the 74th, is that Newton has Kansas Gas Service, okay? The original loan fund was created because you had the members of the Kansas Municipal Gas Association, Heston, Walton, and a number of these other ones, that they are simply a pass-through. So whatever bill they get, they have to pass it on to the consumers. They can't make it done. The consumers have to pay it. Well, within the budgeting process, with Heston, for example, normally has a $200,000 gas bill for that month, not a $5.5 million bill. They can't even legally pay that bill because of cash-based budgeting requirements. So that was part of the change, but then also I'm going to spread it out. What we were told initially was that the KCC, who regulates Kansas Gas, had already created that ability, they had made those changes to allow Kansas Gas to bond that stuff out. And from what I'm gathering, for individuals and businesses, they did. But for the school to still get a huge bill, I mean, I've got, I've got a few properties here in town, and all of those bills have been spread out over a long period. So I don't know why they kind of singled out the schools and certain businesses to still give them those huge bills. But there is a fund out there to, that the schools and bigger corporations that were hit can access.
And I believe there's still money in that fund, so I'm not sure to reach out to you.
It's all through the state treasurer's office. State Treasurer Lynn Rogers has all of that's on there, generally on the front page of their website. The bad part about this, right, because I was involved in this very early on. I had my city administrators reach out to me like the Thursday before, when gas prices just started to spike, and followed this through the entire process. And it was kind of a three-goal approach, and that was, one, we've got to keep the gas flowing no matter what, so nobody freezes and dies. Two, is then we have to figure out how to pay for it, so the gas continues to flow going forward. And then three, we've got to figure out who is responsible for this. Hold them accountable if there was any price gouging or market manipulation, and then ensure that it doesn't happen. The third part is the one that just takes so long, right? The investigation process, the court process, the lawsuits, the subpoenas, to find out what really happened, and was there anything illegal going on there to hold those people accountable?
So the lawsuits that are taking place right now, that's happening through the state, would it be wise for us to have our own counsel as well for our own situation?
Based on what I've read, you guys join kind of a consortium, and I honestly think that that's a good approach. There, I'm no attorney, no, no wake-shaper, won't go out for legal advice. But it seems like to me, there's strength in numbers, you know what I mean? And when you've got all of these schools or whatever behind one guy going after them, I, I mean, it seems like there's value in that to me, but I don't have all the resources.
They're going to vote on that tonight, so the $900 investment, I think it'll be a pretty good one. We can save about $100,000.
I would certainly think so. Yeah, that gas bill, you know, and every, even the cities in my district chose to handle that differently. So Heston took it. They took that bill. They added $1.90 per unit, spread it out for 10 years, and called it a day. Halsted still chose to send out the entire bill to their citizens. And if you came in and requested it, you could have four years to pay it off. Burton sent out the entire bill, said, "We're only going to give you two years to pay it off," even though you could have up to 10. Every community, lower discretion, kind of got to handle it in their own former fashion.
Well, any other questions, board members? I don't want to keep these guys all night, but sure, what do you have?
We can talk about all sorts of fun stuff.
Oh, yes, we could.
Should we call SB 40 out there?
I was going to ask you guys what your thoughts on how that kind of played out.
Well, we'll tell you Wednesday. We have a, we have a appointment at District Court.
Not appreciated.
So I don't appreciate it, obviously, because, you know, we, the thing that it seems to me, you know, we're working hard to try to provide education, and all we're doing is making sure that we're covering our bases from a legal perspective of this. So, once again, that whole control that Hancler referred to, I think that's totally taken out of our hands. And I, I just don't think that... So once again, that whole control that, that Hansel referred to, I think that's totally taken out of our hands. And I, I just don't think that, I just wish that was a different, different way that was handled.
See, and, and to me, I, it's interesting. Again, I'm not in your shoes. I view it very different. I view it very much as putting it in local control. Because it's giving the people the voice to challenge their government entity on a local level if they feel their constitutional rights are, are, are being violated during a state of emergency. And so that's why, in my mind, right, it made sense that, that this occurs, that there is a thoughtful and quick adjudication process, that you can work through this. And if the court ultimately decides, they're in essence deciding kind of for the entire district or that entire issue because there is a, a process in place at the Supreme Court where they could have kind of a mass adjudication type situation. What we saw, in my opinion, again, this is all my opinion, over the last year, were constitutional rights being stepped on by one or two people that affect thousands or millions. I go back to the fact that, for me, government is a function of the people, by the people, for the people, and the people should always have a voice. It's not like in the middle of that, we can all have all new elections and oust who we want to, right? We couldn't even get together and have a cup of coffee at Norm's because of COVID. So for me, in my process, this is simply a mechanism where the people can have a voice in their government. Different perspective, obviously. Maybe I would feel differently if I was sitting in your shoes.
I think you might.
It's possible.
Yeah, and only because they represent their constituents. Their constituents are, are the ones that communicate with them, vote them on, vote them off, and talk to them locally.
Sure.
You know, so it's, I, I believe that that local control is, these folks are empowered to, to do that. They empower me as the superintendent to try to help provide some leadership and guidance. And, like I said, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of dollars to try to defend this over the course of a two-week period. And, you know, I'm not sure those tax dollars, I, I just think that we could have maybe spent those a little bit differently and perhaps a little better, but.
I see this not being the end of the KEMA updates, honestly. We were already talking, or there was talk, I won't say we, but there was talk towards the end, before we even adjourned, of relooking at changing this process a little bit. Because again, I'm a firm believer that while we may put our best foot forward and try to do our best, we don't always have the right answer. We're, we're not right a lot of times and we need to fix it. So just know that we're open. At least I know I am, as are many others, to tweaking the process if, if ultimately it comes down that, that it didn't work the way that we had thought that it would work. So we'll see if that comes back up.
The only recommendation I'll have is when I've heard part of the tweaking might be is that whoever loses is liable for a legal piece. So. That's, you know, that's, that's a concern obviously I have as well too, because we're, we're talking, we're talking about tax dollars. It's not like these folks in making those decisions and those votes were, were doing so with any sort of ill intent to control. We were in charge of, you know, thirty-two hundred, the lives of thirty-two hundred staff, of kids and eight hundred staff. And to me, they're using beneficial advice and science to the best of their ability. And, and one person that disagrees with that, you know, can put us in a, in kind of a state of foot fire for quite some time where we're not able to focus on what we feel is important, that's education. So. We're just going to disagree with some of them.
That's all right. Good point.
Thanks, Andy, for throwing that.
Good helping us understand. I want another one.
While we're here, buddy.
While we're here.
So I've actually talked to Stephen about this in regards to SB forty. I understand where you're coming from and I understand those concerns. And while I don't necessarily disagree with parts of that, I think, like Fred mentioned, some of the frustration can come from something that was written to be vague enough that even multiple attorneys have a hard time deciphering that. And what exactly does that mean, which is difficult. The timeframe is difficult. We have twenty-somethings of school left. So we're personally, if this was waiting to come up, if this was at the beginning of the year or the summer for the following year, that might be a little bit different. But just looking at it from a local level, we have so many things we're trying to address from educational standpoint that our kids have been struggling with, our teachers have been struggling with, and we're trying to get through this year. So our time and effort has been pulled back from that, which right now, we're really so hard to finish this year and plan for next year. So we're COVID pushed things to the side. And we really have to just get back to educating our kids and making necessary changes. And it's difficult to pull together seven, ten people in a moment's notice to have all of this and review this process. So I'm joking when he told you, but half joking, bring your chin on over because I've got a kick for it. This has not been ideal or pleasant. I can understand, like I mentioned, the point behind it. But when it comes down to the technical pieces, it's incredibly difficult to work through. Was it the best time to bring it up? I would say no, but I don't get a say in that. So just food for that. If it does come up for discussion again, I know a lot of us would have some points, but maybe since you sit in a different seat, you don't have our perspective, like we don't have yours, but we would definitely love to discuss some of those really key points and how it might look a little bit different and possibly still accomplish some of the technicals or opportunities.
I think that's awesome. And I totally look forward to that conversation. And you know what? I've got strong shins and I wear boots, so.
And I've got heels, so I'm ready for that.
There you go. If there's one thing I've learned, it's impossible to make a hundred percent of everybody a hundred percent happy. And that's where the communication comes in.
We all understand that.
Exactly. So, so seriously, let me know how that goes. Like I said, we're back in session Monday. We'll be there, I think they're talking seven to ten days-ish. If it comes up, or if it looks like we're going to work on that, I will absolutely reach out to you and speak with you on behalf of kind of your board and where your concerns are, what suggestions you have to make it better, because I'm very open to that.
I think so many boards, we saw that it was going to happen. We all held our pride, wondering if it would happen in our district. We've been through this. And boy, we've learned a lot having gone through the process. It's not awesome at all.
It's awesome that we learned, though. I mean, it's uncomfortable.
Lifelong earners, right? That's great. But yeah, we, we definitely got to.
That's good.
Be prepared for it.
Please, please, please do.
Your district court probably has some things to say about this, too. I'm sure. I don't think the case is typically that, on that quick a notice, but.
Yeah, probably. I'm more concerned about you guys than I am the district court, to be a hundred percent honest. But still, like I said, if it comes back up, I definitely want to have that because I'm the first one to tell people we don't always get it right to be good. I mean, there are some people that think that they always get it right. It's just not the case. We put our best foot forward, but it's incumbent on us to fix it when we don't do it right, or when we don't know the actual outcomes of what are happening. Let's fix it to make it better for everybody.
And I would say that the district is in the same position. We've had to navigate your pandemic in schools. And we know some things that we could have, should have done differently, looking back. But we also, like Fred mentioned, have local control. And while we don't know everything and we do make mistakes and admit that we really are trying our best to do what's best for our kids right here in our communities.
Totally agree. And I totally know that you are. And I'm grateful that each one of you are here, contributing your time for our kids. And I'm.
So good way to end it.
And we're grateful for you as well.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, absolutely. My pleasure. I'm happy to be here at any invitation. I think I was asked that, what are you doing here tonight? Well, I was invited. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you both for coming. Are there any other questions, comments? You guys are free to leave. No voting for you tonight.
That'll be next week.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, last question. You have poet comment.
No comments.
No comments. We do not need the executive session. We are on item five, approved consent agenda.
I'm going to approve consent agenda. Item received.
All those in favor? Opposed? Five, zero. Hardly having five here. It's a small number. Next item, approved ingenuity quote for Opportunity Academy and Newton High School.
This was discussed last month. We discussed the change from Odyssey where they actually advised for the purchase.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? If not, I will enter the motion.
I'm going to approve the ingenuity quote for Opportunity Academy and Newton High School. It's recommended.
I second. All those in favor? Five, zero. Approved bid for school security enhancement project.
Got the next three items, but I'll turn them through pretty quickly. So we did have a public bid out for our security project. And you guys may know that's really concerned with security at the entry points of our schools. We're buying some video surveillance as well as an intercom for the person on the other end to be able to talk to administration personnel and be able to be determine if they gain access or not. That's just the start. And so that phase one went out and then we did, or we are recommending to you all to allow us to contract with DH Pace for that service. And then you can see the dollar amount that they came back with was two eighty-three, so two hundred and eighty-three thousand. I attached the bid so that you could look at it. But I also attached this project bid selection card. So you can see that we had three different vendors apply and how we scored them, giving some points for the locals, some points to pay. We worked with them before and then of course the product as well as the cost. And so it was pretty quick and easy to select DH Pace. And what we like about them is that price that they quoted us at is going to allow us to have a phase two of the security project in which we'll start looking more at additional cameras, et cetera. Because as you may all recall, the total grant was around five hundred thousand dollars. So this puts us at two eighty-three. We still have some money to do some things that, with the security cameras, and I know Fred even mentioned some specific schools that have, that have some very specific needs for surveillance. And so that will allow us to do that. So tonight, I'm hoping that you can approve us to move forward with DH Pace.
Are there any questions on that? I am so excited to see this moving forward, stuff that we needed. Okay, I will enter the motion.
I'll move to approve the selection of DH Pace for the district-wide school security enhancement project.
One person in favor? Five. Approved agreement to join coalition of KASB.
Right, this is the gen item we talked about last, last time we all got together. But effectively, what it's going to allow us to do is join this coalition of other school districts to hire this, this firm out of Kansas City that's already looking into and investigating whether our price gouging occurred. And then even beyond that, working to represent the districts to negotiate different terms. If repayment does occur, what will actually be the, the new terms? And will it be the full amount? Or how will that be spread out? Are there any discounts that we can apply for? They seem pretty confident that they'll be able to get something for us. And what it's going to cost us is to join the coalition is six, six hundred and fifty dollars, which I think is pretty minimal for what, for what we're getting. And again, this is just basically contracting with them to represent us and to investigate this in the first order. And so with that said, and you guys know quite a bit about all this already, I've attached the actual agreement that's unsigned until you approve it. And then as well as the professional services of what it is that they're, that they're offering.
I have a question. So is it feasible to join? Do we expect any additional fees as things might progress? Like if they find more than they're expecting to and need to do more work?
And it is possible. But at that, at that stage, I'll come back to you and seek that approval if there is a next phase.
Yeah, I was looking at a chart that looked like there's a, a rated hourly rates for certain attorneys. So we, we kind of wide open as we go into this. And my whole question was, I've unfortunately been a part of things like this before in the past and they stretch out sometimes for years. And is there an amount or a timeframe, or let's say these lawyers keep throwing bills at us, what is the, when do we want to say, hey, this is worth the investment up to X amount?
Cost benefit analysis.
Right. Or we need to cut our, our, instead of just even wide open, some kind of a target. So we have some kind of goal to know, hey, I have twenty thousand. We should probably get together and have a come and Jesus meeting, depending on the lawsuits and everything else going outside that we're not involved with. Because the state's doing their own thing. There's no guarantees.
Right.
Right? And, and this is not a guarantee. And all my attorneys have been super confident every time I send them a check. As long as I can send them that check. And about fifty percent of the time, you know, it is what it is. But, um, so I don't know. I think as a, as a group, should we have some kind of a benchmark that we have a come and Jesus meeting between each other for our community too, to say, hey, this is about as far as we're willing to carry it? I don't know if these other programs are possibly available, the thirty million that's possibly there. I don't know if it's ten, eleven, or five or what. But assessing that from talking to when at the treasury over there and seeing if he can get us some help for a worst-case scenario. I just want to make sure that we're moving needles and then we have a benchmark of success of when we need to cut and cut our losses and go. So that's my two cents. As I was reading this, Angela, I had some question. Yeah.
So the gap is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
And so this is six hundred and fifty. But I totally hear what you're saying though, is that at some point, we may say, okay, we pushed this on enough. And that may even be a, a timing thing, you know, it may take out dollars. So all this money is going into a trust. And so they're paying the attorneys fees out of that trust between all these two hundred school districts. So within that trust, there's quite a bit of money to, to make this happen. But yeah, they could expend it. But once they expend out that trust, then they're supposed to free, there's supposed to be another agreement with us. And at that time, that's why I'm bringing it to you and say, okay, they've, they've, they've expended the trust. Now, do we still want to be part of this pocket type of that?
So, so common sense tells us two hundred schools, part of six hundred, they should take us away.
Yeah.
Say if they come back again.
Right.
I mean, that, it, it, yeah, to get ridiculous would be pretty far out there.
There's a big, there's a big gap.
Right, right, yeah. We don't want to offer, give me a count.
Right.
Good luck, man.
So yeah, you'd only be giving permission for this initial investigation until they expend that first trust.
Are there any other questions? Do I have other questions?
I'll move to approve and join the coalition organized by the KASB to engage Smithman and Securale law firm to investigate parent natural gas protection.
Second, all those in favor? Five, zero. Our next item is district-wide twenty sixteen hail damage.
Yeah, this is kind of a, this is some good news. Like yay. But a while back, back in the fall, it started getting bagged around and I wish he was here, but our director of facilities, Chris Schaefer, was kind of recommending to us that, hey, we have this old hail claim that kind of went dormant that you guys might want to look into. And so just kind of off that lead, Friday night talk and with Chris, we were able to get that back open. And we're really happy because just last week, we were notified that we're going to be receiving about one point one million dollars, maybe even a little bit more than that for hail damage that occurred back in twenty sixteen from a kind of a, an uninvestigated claim. So what, that money, of course, is going to be all earmarked because there's real damage that, that needs to, that needs to be repaired. But what we're happy about is that's something that's going to impact nearly all of our schools. You can see in the kind of explanation that we were already, the most damage occurred at Newton High School, Hubert, Chisholm, Northridge, Slate Creek, Santa Fe, and the ETC. And so for sure, we're going to want to touch those buildings and make sure that they get the, that they get the upgrades or at least the fixes that they need. But that is going to need money, again, that is going to help our facilities, but then also kind of give us a little bit of some breathing in with our capital outlays that we're not trying to push all of the gross capital outlays. So a very rare, but very, very nice to see win for the, for the district.
So I asked Fred this question, but I'd like to ask you as well.
Sure.
Can you, do you have any explanation as to why this went dormant? Because this is a, a huge amount. This is prior to both bond issues that we put out. What happened with it? Why did this move forward?
Well, I mean, it's, yes, it's quite a bit. And with, you know, it would force me to speculate on why I think you would do this strategically. But it wouldn't be anything that would be extremely positive, I, I say. But, but what I would say is that, you know, from what I, from what we have been told and from what has played out, because the insurance company actually did go ahead and make a claim, is that at the time, that that appeared to be a decision that was probably made at the, at a district level.
So ours, it, clearly it's not on you. So you're not in the hot seat tonight.
No, no, no.
Not that at all. So essentially, our district at the time decided not to pursue this. Correct?
That's the way we understand it. That's the way we understand it.
That's incredibly disappointing to hear. But thank you for finding it. Thank you for working on this.
Well, Chris is the one that, working with. Well, Chris is the one that, uh, working with Ray Rooker. And so what we're going to get is we're going to get a lot of groups at least re-coding. We'll get a couple of them replaced.
A couple replaced.
And, and a lot of them re-coded. So that'll double tremendously in terms of capital cost. So all we're going to worry about is what, what's happened going forward. We're not going to look back on that immediately.
I am grateful that it has been discovered and handled appropriately this time because we certainly need all that we can get right now. Good, here. It's all you only get for you. Okay, I know, and it's, I don't have to say anything, it's just happening. It's perfect. Fantastic. Okay, new business. Approve NHS and Opportunity Academy early graduate requests.
You have a couple of requests there. You're, like we have said, you'll have those filtered in throughout the course of the year. So I always want to congratulate those kids for doing that. Um, it's a pretty neat thing for those kids to be able to finish and do.
I move to approve early graduation requests for Newton High School and Opportunity Academy students.
Second.
All those in favor? Five, zero. Approved contract extensions for district office staff.
Guys have the, a list there for district office staff and the next one for building administrators. A little bit later in the year probably than I would normally want to do this, but, uh, we're ready to get started for the next year with those two lists of staff.
Quickly, um, when do you usually want to do these two things?
Um, it'd be nice to do these in February. Yeah. I mean, just, it just gives them some, some, um, you know, sensation.
Reassurance.
Yeah, reassurance. Words are tough things, so.
Yeah.
Usually superintendent contract, you wouldn't do that. Usually do that in December, the way they switch the elections around. So you've got a couple of December, January, the next month.
I move to approve contract extensions for the district office license and classified administration as presented.
I hear. All those in favor? Five, zero. Approved contract extensions for building administrators.
I move to approve contract extensions for the building administrators as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Five, zero. Everyone can have five appropriate. Approved YMCA summer scholars program.
This is something that's taken place in the past and this will be a part of the summer recovery. Um, one of the different things about the, the Y scholars is they're going to be using our Capra's debuting program for that rather than what they had used in your council, we were consisting of district officials. It's a good, a good opportunity.
I move to approve the NLU with the YMCA summer scholars program twenty twenty-one.
Second. All those in favor? Five, zero. Cooper Early Ed Center logo.
This is just a request to change their logo to a more kid-friendly sort of logo. They felt what they had was kind of a more institutional looking and they wanted it to look more kid-friendly. It shouldn't cost us anything because it'll be on printed materials and stuff that we haven't printed yet. So, um, I wholeheartedly support it.
It's definitely more kid-friendly.
Yes, it's true.
Review of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two handbooks.
These are just for that, for your review. We have the Chisholm and also the transportation handbook. Um, normally, I believe, we, we look at these, uh, in May and June. I think last year in July is when we approved, actually August maybe, when we finally approved a couple of handbooks. So you'll have a few more filtered in. The changes are in yellow for each one of those respective handbooks. So what we'll probably do is approve those next month or at the next meeting. Um, or if we approve all of them one, but the rest of them. But this gives you a chance to read through those and see what other changes need to be suggested or ask questions. So just for your information.
And it did look like there were not any changes in these things for them. We are, I am G B three for Monday community meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to get your thoughts. I appreciate it. Everybody had, all board members did their homework. You sent two people, every one of you. That was awesome. Um, I just wanted to get your feedback on how you thought things went. We want to hold more of these meetings, um, with different groups of community members. So just a little open conversation, as long or as short as you want to go with how you, what you perceive, what, what surprised you, what validated some of the things you felt, you know, we're doing well or maybe not as well? Or, you know, what surprised you about what a Newton graduate maybe should be, uh, representing?
What looks wrong?
I thought it went fairly well. Um, it was nice to hear the conversation, hear from different voices that you don't always hear from. I think that's the most exciting part is bringing in different people and like you and I had talked about, if you attend one, then you don't attend subsequent meetings. We want new people in at each meeting with lots of different voices. So I think maybe our hardest part will be getting those community members into the meeting. But I am excited to see kind of the outcome of that. I think we had really good discussion.
Great discussion.
I don't feel like we've done something like that in the past in the community. Um, so I think it was well received. I appreciate that.
I really enjoyed having the students there. I know we only had one, but I think that was a great perspective. We have students, parents, different community members. I think it was a great diverse group. So if we can keep that going, which is going to be hard here right now, right? Um, I think it'd be great.
I was going to say, I don't think it's going to be hard to keep it going because I invited several people and they weren't available. And I told them, well, we're going to do these again, so I'll remember to invite you next time. And so it's good to hear that we are going to keep doing these with lies and, but I had, I saw a couple of people who couldn't make it that specific night. And even one of the people that I did invite and was supposed to come couldn't make it. So, um, it's nice to hear that we're going to continue to have these opportunities.
I think we have people that are willing and it's just so difficult with the scheduling. Everyone's so busy.
There you go.
So I'm grateful that we have people who want to attend. That's it.
Yeah, I, I really, really enjoyed it for a lot of reasons. Um, it was really interesting to me to see how a lot of the information lined up. Um, and we heard a lot of the same things as we went through those exercises. So Fred, I don't know where you pulled that from or where, how you guys put that together, but a lot of light bulbs went off for me too. Um, and then the diversity within the group that we had there. We have people from all walks of life and as you've said, um, and, and I'm looking forward to getting another two people there that are totally different from the last two because I try to follow my instructions in my little note to the best of my ability, which is try to find some different places, right? People that we normally wouldn't ask to come in, um, that are my everyday life. And so I'm really looking forward to grabbing two other people if that's possible and bringing them to the next one and continuously learning and then engaging the community, I feel like, uh, at that level, kneecap to kneecap, um, you know, kind of where, where the rubber is rode, if you will. I really enjoy hearing them and then getting more comfortable as they went to two or three tables. Uh, I think it opened up a little bit more. We were getting deeper feedback than the initial almost nervousness between us. Um, so I really loved how that exercise promoted that. So I enjoyed it. I'm looking forward to the next one.
We, my, my plan is to have several of these, it's just a qualitative data collection is all these, to find those patterns. So, um, it, it'll happen throughout this late spring and early summer and we can use that data along with other quantitative data to really validate what our district mission and vision and stuff is going to be. We'll look at those board goals, see if they're appropriate, which, you know, I, I have no issue with any of those, but see if those strategies that we have on a meet there are what we might consider to be useful. We will, um, have something within the next month, more than likely, if not before. Honestly, this next month is crazy, um, with, with the end of school and stuff, but, um, through the late spring and early summer, I, I want to make these kind of some fun activities in the future. So we will be reaching out to you and others in the community. So it won't be following on your back to attend all of these, obviously. Um, but I wanted this first one with you guys at the tables so that you heard from those different groups of people in that way. So, but it'll be, it'll be good.
I, I just like being around the people that were enthusiastic about where we're headed. You know, um, the two people that I asked were very happy to participate. Um, and even for everybody that was there, even if they did maybe have suggestions of maybe we could do more of this in the future, they still were very proud of, um, what we're, who we are now and what, what our potential is. And so I just really appreciate it being that large of a group of people that are enthusiastic on Newton, um, want to see Newton thriving, want to see our schools specifically thriving, um, and very proud of some of the things that we're doing already. Um, you know, the, like our CTE program is one that kind of came up a lot. So many opportunities for our kids here in Newton, um, that, you know, you just don't see everywhere. So we're doing some really good things and folks are seeing that. And, and yet again, because they have suggestions for some other things we could add to the mix, they're, they're still proud of who we are and, and, you know, I believe we're, we're going to achieve some good things here in Newton, Kansas. So I like, I like being together.
We have a few building reports to read through, like a future or comments. Andy, do you have anything?
Um, I don't, I really, uh, yeah, I guess I do. I know, but, but, no, no, no. You know, I, I'm really, um, amazed by how this team is pulled together through everything and our leadership and all these new things coming in and new staff moving around and things getting changed on us left and right and being nimble. And, uh, just super proud to be a part of the team and everything we've done up to this point. And I'm looking forward to somewhat of a God willing normal year as we walk into next year and what we can do because there's been so many amazing things happening. Look to your point, the momentum and the things we've heard from people. Um, when I was a little bit squeamish about how much, you know, pushback we were going